I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Bruno. At this time, I'm going to ask the Board of Education and our administrative team if they could please take a seat in the first row, please. Good evening and welcome to the Board of Education Student Recognition Ceremony. I'm Dr. Hazel, the proud superintendent of our board of education. Antonio, thank you for starting off with that big round of applause and getting the audience involved here. I appreciate it and for leading us in the pledge of allegiance, this school here at all of our Board of Education members. Thank you. I would like to congratulate all of our award recipients here assembled for their outstanding achievements and accomplishments in academics, athletics, and extracurriculars. Each of you have worked hard to earn this recognition and we are so very proud of you. To the parents and the guardians and the families and siblings that are here this evening, thank you for being our partners and for all of your support. Without all of you, this would not be possible. Congratulations on your student's special achievement and recognition this evening. What I know to be true is the work that goes on in this very special school district. Our goal: helping each student reach their potential. Reaching their potential in the classroom and also out of the classroom and in the community. Our staff and administrators know that our beginning point is to ensure that positive relationships and connections are established amongst our students and with the adults in this community and organization. Our coaches and advisors cultivate these relationships seamlessly on a daily basis as they advise, coach, and lead our students. Your commitment to the students, to the community, and the schools and our programs is very much appreciated. So just from the students, really a round of applause for your coaching and advising. They are here for you day and night, through your seasons and in the classrooms. These positive relationships and interactions, they pave the way for engagement. Relationships, engagement. Engagement at the highest levels in our classrooms, on the field and in the community. These regional foundational hallmarks enable our students to confidently and passionately develop themselves while they're in high school. The growth that our students are making in this school district academically, socially, and athletically makes us all proud. Tonight's program and the many celebratory programs throughout the school year that highlight and recognize our students is a testament to this district's work. A very special thank you to the folks who are sitting in the front row here, our Board of Education members. Their time dedicated to the work outstanding that has been recognized. And they are very, so very supportive to me and to our administrators and staff in this district, and we couldn't do it without you. Congratulations to all of our award recipients that are out there. I and all of the administrators and staff are so proud of you. Tonight's program is about one hour. We had so many award recipients for this program. We actually kind of break it up into two. So we're gonna recognize three schools at 6:30 and another three schools at 7:30. But that's a great problem to have. So we ask for everyone's full attention as each student is personally, student athlete, is personally recognized, but also recognized for their accomplishments as a team and as a group and as an organization. We're gonna start with Howell High School, followed by Freyhold and then Marlboro High School. I invite Mr. Roblerman, the director of our high school, to present to the board of education. Enjoy the evening.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I want to echo basically everything Dr. Hazel said. We cannot do any of this without the support of all the wonderful people that she mentioned and we thank you a lot. We're gonna start off with Howell, but since I'm up first, I'm gonna tell you. First, I was gonna put the board members up, but they're already here, so that worked out well for me. What I'm going to do is, since I'm first, there will be some things such as All Shore Chorus that we have and some of the other schools have it. I'm gonna read the blurb about certain items. So when, let's say, Freyhold Borough goes and they have All Shore Chorus, they'll read the names so you don't have to hear the same thing over and over again. Also, I want to go over the path to this success. So everyone's gonna come up these steps right here. Go across the stage, go down those steps, go back to your seat, and we ask you to stay. Usually it's six schools and it's hard to stay for that long, but we only have three at this time. So we ask you to respect the other schools and stay. Once the three schools are done, then you'll get out of here. Unless you want to stay with the second one until the other three schools are all finished. So first up is All Shore Chorus. So All Shore Chorus auditions were held in November at Howell High School. Out of the many vocalists who auditioned from the surrounding Monmouth and Oshie County, only a select number were chosen to personally perform in All Shore Chorus. The participating schools from the district were Howell, Colts Neck, Freyhold Township, and Marlboro. Fourteen students from Howell High School are representatives of the 2025 All Shore Chorus. So this is All Shore Chorus and All Shore Mixed Chorus. Annabelle was sitting next to me, I tried to get her to explain to me the difference. She said something about sopranos and I kind of got lost, but I will let the people know if that's the case. So again, we're gonna call you up as you're walking up. I'll call the next person up. And we ask you, if you're coming up in a group, to stay on the stage until you're all done. If you're coming up by yourself, then obviously else at the social, you can call. So first one up is Anthony Ambrose. Maytel Arroyo. Libby Rose Combs. Zara Orlicenko. Zoe Lee Woods. Alyssa Ray. Layla Fablisti. Lila Turtle. And Zoe Turtle. Ladies and gentlemen, that is All Shore Mixed or All Shore Chorus. Thank you so much. All right, now is All Shore Mixed and All State Chorus. So during the last week of March, several students from the district, specifically Howell High School, auditions for All State Chorus of New Jersey. Students came from all over the state to compete for this honor and being chosen for this prestigious ensemble. Out of the hundreds of vocalists who auditioned, five were chosen from Howell High School. So I'm gonna call the ones who are here today. First one up. So this is All Shore Mixed Chorus and All State Mixed Chorus. That's William Alcobar. Next up, I'm not sure if she's here, she might have popped in, so I'm better off calling her name. This is for All Shore Chorus, Mixed Chorus, and All State Women's Chorus, Aireya. Then we have All Shore Chorus and All State Mixed, Josh Rivera. And then we have all three here. All Shore Chorus, Mixed Chorus, and All State Women's Chorus, Annabelle Viegas Sandoval. Next is All State Modern Band, which is different than All State Symphonic Band. All State Modern Band is a competitive audition of all-star ensembles of only seventeen students from across the entire state of New Jersey that make this. It features popular, contemporary music and instrumental from the world of pop rock. Of the seventeen in the entire state, six are from Howell High School's F-PAC Music Real Production Program. Six. First, we have Brandon Vasella. Robbie Everett. Zoe Lee Woods. Michael Montano. Josh Rivera, come on back up. N.C.R. Allen, Paul Rees and Case, Aniana, Trima Kaski. Next up is New Jersey All State Music Technology Festival. It's the first ever Music Technology Expo that was held in March of 2011. It was the first time it was held. In 2024, years later, the Music Tech Expo was rebranded as the Music Tech Fest and became part of New Jersey's Music Educators Association, which is NJMBA. Candidates attended four master classes which are instructed by music teachers and professionals from across the country. Candidates from across the state submitted projects in covers and remixes. Mixed competition and original composition. There are only three places awarded in each of these categories. And we had one kid who was first place and it was for covers and remix categories, Brandon Vasella. All right, moving right along. We do have All Shore Symphonic Band, but our band kids weren't able to make it, but I'm gonna read the blurb in case somebody else has them. So All Shore Symphonic Band is to be eligible for this All Shore Symphonic Band, you must be a student affiliated in the Shore Conference, which is Monmouth and Oshie County. In addition, you must be sponsored by your band director. Only a member band director can sponsor a student for this ensemble. You must be a member of your school's symphonic band and remain such throughout your All Shore experience. Audition requirements include scales, rudiments. All of them are excerpts from NJMBA All State Band Solo List and Sight Reading. Candidates will perform wind mallet percussion scales, stairs, traps, and the timpani. And we had eleven, or thirteen kids make that. Unfortunately, they cannot be here tonight to play their instruments somewhere else. Congratulations. Next up, we have some, our success in our district with this Casey Awards. The Casey Awards are basically the Tony Awards, as you know it. It's at Kent Basie Theater and it is an annual event modeled after the awards. Like as I said, the Tony Awards recognizing achievements and growth of Monmouth County schools and theater programs. Every year, the Basie Education Department forms a committee of theater lovers, performers, and educators who then attend and score upwards of fifty school productions as for drama and for musicals. But this for the Basies this year certainly kicks off, kicked off with a great start in April when they announced all the nominees. Howell High School had seventeen nominees for those Basies. And they recognize the actions of every member directing, and directing, to set, costume design, choreography, and lighting, orchestra. Seven weeks later, a passing crowd packs the historical theater at the Basies. It's not to be missed. Great, great show. You get to see a little bit from everybody. And that's where they honor our students and they give out the awards as if it's like the Oscars and Grammys. So this year, we had one student who was outstanding supporting performance in a female identified role musical, A.D. Isaac's Rodriguez. And we did have another one, he's not here today, but I'll let you know what it was. It was outstanding future performance in a male identified musical, Spamalot. Next up are Eagle Scouts. Eagle Scouts is the highest achievement or rank attainable in the Boy Scouting Program of the Boy Scouts of America. The designated Eagle Scout was founded over one hundred years ago. Only four percent of Boy Scouts are branded this rank after a lengthy review process. The requirements necessary to achieve this rank take years to fulfill. Since its founding, the Eagle Scouts rank has been earned by more than 2.5 million young men. Requirements include earning at least twenty-one merit badges. The Eagle Scouts must demonstrate scout spirit and ideal attitude based upon the scout oath and law, service, and leadership. This includes an extensive service project that the Scouts plan, organize, and lead and manage. And tonight, though, we have some, there are some from other schools, I believe. So I'm gonna give a brief little blurb about what these kids did as I call them up. So the first kid is Christian Breiner. Christian, come on up. So Christian accomplished this project over the course of about a month while building a hay hutch at Riding High Farms, which is a five-to-one senior organization that focuses on teaching people with disabilities how to ride horses. This hutch was constructed by putting posts in the ground with concrete, along with putting in a floor, four walls, and a roof to keep the hay in place and somewhat safe from the rain and other weather conditions. Christian, congratulations. Next, we have Mr. Ryan Gillo. Ryan, come on up. So Ryan, he was a very good student. He was a garden at St. Veronica's Church in Howell. The rehabilitation of the garden included mulch, plants, trees, and a statue. He accomplished the task with assistance from Twin Ponds Farm and Howell. We have good pies too there. Good job, Ryan. We did have two other, but they're not here, so I'm gonna move along for you. Next up is girls volleyball. We had our fall ceremony, but that stuff wasn't out yet. So we invited her to come here for this meeting. Incredible athlete, three-sport athlete, twelve-hour signature, All Shore in girls volleyball, and A-North Player of the Year, here along. Moving right along to the bowling team. Boys and girls, we'll start off with the girls bowling team. Our girls bowling team undefeated, Monmouth County champs, Shore Conference champs, Central Jersey Group Four sectional champs, and for the last three, a three-time Group Four state overall champions. Impressive, impressive statistics. So I'm gonna call up the athletes and some of them have won, some others aren't honors as well. So everyone's being called up for winning all those team championships, but there's some individual honors I'll recognize when they come up. So first up, we have Julia Hughes. Megan Palton. Riley Palies. Colleen Stapleton. Lydia Ziegler. Sophia Routcher, who also was second team All State. Kylie Gurney. She too had some individual honors where she was first team All Shore and second team All State. And last but not least, Madison Lewis, who was first team All Shore, first team All State, and in the overall individual tournament, I was there to see it, she crushed it and ended up taking second in the state overall. Incredible, incredible. We had a couple other kids that were here, so we'll move on to the boys bowling team. Yes, the boys and girls team, both very successful. The boys bowling team won the Monmouth County Championship and they won the South Jersey Group Four State Championship this year as well. First up, Tommy Lee. Next up, Jayden Streps. Paul Lampy. Michael Scott. Tahid Hill. And Christian Brinkfield. I asked Paul if I got it, he was scared, I think so. Okay, now we're moving on. All right, Chris, come on up, buddy. Good job, man. Now we move on to our cheerleading team. Our cheerleading team has had some incredible stats over the years. They this year won the State Division Mega All Music Championship and the Group Four All Music Champion. I believe they've won in the last ten years eight state championships and like seven national championships. We have an incredible competition cheer team. And again, when I call these young ladies up, there's some extra honors individually, but everyone is being called up for the mega and for the section and for the Group Four championship. So first up is going to be Ally Finanin, who's also the captain. Next up, Mia Galenkiya. Amelia Murray. Gabriella Omatazi. Skylar Torres. Avery Vasquez. And I believe that's all the cheerleaders that we checked in, so I'll stop there. There's obviously many more on there. Correct? No one's cheering there and I didn't get them? Next up, Ice Hopper. We have one young man who is one of the best players in the state, I'd say. He won the Shore Conference Player of the Year this year, Mr. Jack Lyons. All right, we do have five wrestlers who placed in the states. We have kids placed in the top five, six in the state, Shore Conference champs, et cetera. They are all at practice today, getting ready probably with another state championship or move on to the next level of college, but I did want to recognize that. And last, oh, not last, next, girls basketball. We won a state championship last year, first time in school history. This year, we get into the quarters or semis, but we do have one player we want to recognize who is, I think, the second or third player ever from Howell High School, female, to score a thousand points. She scored a thousand eighty-eight points and had a thousand thirteen rebounds here at the county. Moving on, girls lacrosse. Right, one of the biggest growing sports in the state of New Jersey. We have an athlete that plays girls lacrosse at our school who is one of the premier athletes, not only in the state but likely in the country. This young lady was first team all Monmouth County. She broke the Howell High School record with four hundred and twenty career points, which is insane, and two hundred and seventy-two career goals. If you don't know much about lacrosse, I'm just telling you that's insane. She is unbelievable at the sport, great kid too. Bella Acevedo Felman. Okay, and last but not least, our spring track team, which is just coming off the end of their season. We have two athletes that have phenomenal seasons in track and field. One of them, both of them are going to play at D1 schools next year, play or run. The first one is first team All Shore in sprints, one hundred meters, has been a champion as well, Gabby Snooten. And our last track athlete, the last person we will speak of today, is a young man who has had an exceptional last couple of years in cross-country, winter, and spring track. Run the eight hundred and had the number one time in the entire state of New Jersey in a race he ran already in the year, the eight hundred. He's been All Shore, he's won sectional titles. This year, he went to the even champions and is the fifth best kid in the entire state in the eight hundred, running like a one-fifty-two. He is practicing right now for a meet this weekend to go to the Nationals at UPenn where he will compete against everybody in the world at that event, which is a crazy event. And the other day, he had a prep run for it, so he just ran the mile on like four-ten. Right, four-ten, four-thirteen? Four-ten, okay. Dude, that was his warm-up to get ready for the eight hundred, which is longer, which is shorter than the mile, but that was his prep run. You're gonna have four-ten mile. I don't think I can drive a car for a four-ten mile. Ladies and gentlemen, Michael Carr. So ladies and gentlemen, I am going to be turning the program over to Freyhold Borough, supervisor of extracurricular activities, Mr. Josh Mel. Come on up.
Congratulations to Howell High School, and Basie Chorus. Really, congratulations to Howell High School. It's great to see so many people here tonight. So Freyhold Borough, we have some academic award winners we want to recognize first of all. We have a young lady here this evening who has a very prestigious honor. She was recognized as a Big Future College Ambassador Program Award winner. The Big Future College Ambassador Program Award winners are ambassadors that step up for their academic and social achievement. And our winner from Freyhold Borough High School, Sri Lhasa Faruq Tani. We also have two national merit scholarships. We also have two National Merit Scholarship Award winners. To compete in National Merit Scholarships, semifinalists and finalists must advance to the finalist level of competition by fulfilling several additional requirements. A semifinalist can become a finalist and compete for a merit scholarship award in one program, and about ninety-five percent of those semifinalists attain finalist standing, and about half of the finalists win the national award in the merit scholarship. Our first recognition goes to our National Merit Scholarship semifinalist, Kevin Saraba. And we do have a National Merit Scholarship finalist who could not be here this evening, and that is Alexander Kristowski. Our extracurricular and student-athlete award winners. We have two students who competed in the HOSA state competition. Both were first-place state winners in the Health and Occupation Students of America Competition in the winter. These students have ambitions of participating as future healthcare professionals and are outstanding individuals. The two first-place winners both won in the same event, one male, one female. For HOSA first-place state EMT, and that was Sedana Subramanian and Ronald Mylanus. Like Mr. Robert had said earlier, we do have two Eagle Scouts in attendance that we would like to recognize to their outstanding contributions to the town of Freehold, and they just earned their merit badge as Eagle Scouts, and that is Andrew Shang Shen and Matthew Jessie. Freehold Borough also would like to recognize our All-Shore band members. One is here with us tonight, and is walking back up to the stage. That's Andrew Shang Shen, who's All-Shore Jazz Band. And Juliette McCamara, All-Shore Symphonic Band, could not be here this evening. Next, we would like to recognize a very special team. It took a lot of hard work, time, and effort to get the esports program off the ground at Freehold Borough High School, which is the first esports team in the district, and this was their first year competing. That being said, in their very, very first season of competition, they won the state championship. They then went on to lose a very tough semifinal match in the spring, but bring pretty much the entire team back for next year, and they did very, very well. I'd like to congratulate the coaches and the members of the team, and there are Coach Galano, Coach McGilsky, Daniel Barbasio, Rodrigo Guaynus Romani, Karen Kryste, Alan Few, Hayden Inzalbuck, Steven Lopez Plaza, Hugo Munias Hernandez, Benjamin Sorokin, Benjamin Troy, and Katie Weller. Congratulations. I would be remiss if I did not recognize this young man who could be here this evening. But in his senior year, Brian Tassie picked right back up where he left off in his Allstate junior campaign. This young man took the Shore Conference and state tournaments by storm the past two seasons, leading Freehold Borough to a sectional championship that forced us in 1974 last year, and the first group-three final in school history. As the season progressed this year, his accomplishments continued to impress. He was named first-team All-Shore Divisional Player of the Year, and recorded his 1,000th point, and has been recognized as second-team All-State, and was recently recognized as a Freehold Borough Male Athlete of the Year. Congratulations to Brian. And last but not least, we have another very special student athlete in our attendance tonight. In his senior spring track and field season, Tyler Passmore won the Monmouth County Tournament in the 200 meters. He then proceeded to win the 100 and 200 meters at the Shore Conference Tournament. He was meter champion, state place winner, and set the school record multiple times in the 200 meters with a time of 21.17. Congratulations to Tyler Passmore. At this time, I would like to call up Principal of Marlboro High School, Dr. Daniel Alana. He turns the Year's Best Athlete of the Year to Sir David Frye.
All right, so while our board of ed members, Mr. Messinger makes his way up here, I would just also like to congratulate all the students and all the families for your wonderful accomplishments. You're all amazing, and proud to stand up here for Marlboro High School to invite some of our students to be recognized as well. I do want to take a moment to thank Dr. Hazel and the entire central office staff and our board of ed as well for supporting us at the building level and being able to provide all these opportunities for our students. Now, how about us, we would like to recognize our Model United Nations students. Model UN is an organization where students take on the roles of ambassadors, delegates, or other UN officials, researching and debating current international issues. The program aims to educate students about the UN, world affairs, and culture, while also developing skills like public speaking, critical thinking, and negotiations. Receiving the award of Outstanding Delegation means that our students went above and beyond not only in their given programs at their regional competitions, but they also carried themselves like professionals during downtime. An Outstanding Delegation provides help to others and demonstrates what it means to work together. So I'm gonna call up the individual students. As you come out, the first two that I call just stay at the end of the stage, please, and wait, that way everybody will get their moment for a photograph as individuals looking at the team since the Model UN is a team delegation at the end. And there were a couple of students that are in individual distinction, and I'll point that out. So we'll start with Sidhu Gaddapalli. And Alex. Adam Yasi. Madison Barnes. And Madison Beer. And Madison also was recognized as Premier First Year for the Press Committee. Daniel Blasgat. Lauren Chen. Gabriela Love. Gabriela Love Karata. Avital Dret. As you've done, Rob. Wolf Ami. Sarah Foleev. Mayhav Arudh. Sama Jay. Sami Jalloh. Gretel G. Randy Cladman. Megan Demar. Karen Lee. Rafael Albo. Willa Magnus. Robert Magnus. Justin Van Toom. Alexandra Zai. Anya Yatal. Who was also recognized for Best Group and Premier First Year. Ethan Eng. Arna Kaladi. Sophia Corrente. British. Fafafatham. Jayden Reyna. Shade Robertson, who was also recognized as Best Group and Premier First Year. Jellalulala. Zaket Sani, who was recognized for Outstanding Country. Ishan Shan. Ayen Shubastana. Rea Vargis, who was also recognized for Outstanding Country. And lastly, William Wu. If you have anything on my card, calling up a group follower up here, please feel free to do so. Congratulations to our entire Model UN delegation. All right, next up from Marlboro High School, this winter, we had 25 students from our Model Government team who participated in the Rutgers Model Congress competition. They competed against hundreds of students from across the state, or tri-state area. Marlboro's delegation earned the highest distinction at that event, similar to our Model UN, the best high school delegation award, securing a first-place finish overall. Each student delegate was individually evaluated and scored throughout the competition. Notably, fourteen of Marlboro's 25 delegates were first-time competitors, making this achievement all the more meaningful. So same process, I'll call you up as individuals, just stay up on the stage, line up as a group, we'll get a group photo, and then we'll move on to the next group. So first up, we have Samira Abra. Dan Alex. Dan Blasgat. Zachary Robertman. AJ Pepper. Silvah Cheng. Amanda Delora. We had a little group, who was also recognized as Best Delegate in Advanced Committee. Silvan Downey. Riley Doyle. Parisian Moplin. Stephanie Yalpen, who was also recognized as Best Delegate. Sapi Jaswal. Neil Khanan. Michael Christal. April McPhee. Zane Edder. Angie Viejas. Myla Anya, who also recognized as Best Delegate in Advanced Committee. Brooke Slater. Sophia Smolynchinsky. Meli Sokolova. Maggie Surday. Allison Tepper. All right, at Marlboro High School, we were also fortunate to have multiple students who received the distinction of All-Shore Band. So I'll start by calling up three students who earned both All-Shore Jazz Band and All-Shore Symphonic Band. These three students are Sunay Bhatt. Isabella Poritson. Son Le. Double All-Shore. Then we had students that received the distinction of All-Shore Symphonic Band. So they are Narantaj. Haley Wong. Leatresa. And Emily. Congratulations to our All-Shore Band students. Next up from Marlboro High School are the Consumer Bowl students. So the Consumer Bowl is a game show-style competition in which students answer consumer-related questions to multiple formats to test their knowledge of consumer issues. These students performed exceptionally well and collectively won first place in both county and regional competitions. They then went on to compete at state-level competition and finished first overall in the entire state of New Jersey. So congratulations to all of you on your outstanding achievement. They are Summer Adler. Sarah Pachia Patel. Valerie Vanarski. Taylor Newman. Chase Sussman. David Dabb. We have a business magnet program at Marlboro High School, so some of this should make sense, right? Consumer Bowl champs. All right, the next group of similar vein are our FBLA students, so FBLA stands for Future Business Leaders of America. This is the largest business-career-focused student organization in the world. FBLA inspires and prepares students to become community-minded business leaders through career preparation and leadership experiences. This winter, the FBLA students competed at the State Leadership Conference, and among many other impressive results, we had three students come in first place in the state. Two of them are here with us tonight, so I'll call back up Summer. Summer Adler. She was first place in the country championship. And we have Akil Power Mesivin, who was first place in our security and best. So both Mr. Robertman and Mr. Mel gave some information about the National Merit Scholarship program. So we have one student who was recognized as a National Merit semifinalist, which you already heard the description for that at our earlier meeting back in December. This student, Karen Dolger, has since gone on to become a finalist. To be a finalist, one must have recorded consistently very high academic performance on all grades in high school, write a compelling essay, and take the SAT and ACT and earn a score that meets or exceeds that which established them to be the semifinalists, which was based on the PSAT. So Karen Dolger, congratulations. At Marlboro High School, we also had three students that earned the rank of Eagle Scout. So I'll first call up Sunay Bhatt. Sunay constructed a bridge placed over a streetbed that is part of the Homdale Park Trail. Sunay's bridge makes passage safer and more accessible for hikers. Congratulations to Sunay. Sunay's brother, Sabi Bhatt, also is an Eagle Scout. Come on up. Sabi made seven benches for his local new temple. This was for the elderly and disabled and the general public to sit and attend the religious ceremony in cover. Congratulations. Now, third Eagle Scout recipient is Sami Jaswal. Sami designed and implemented an in-ground garden that grows herbs used in various temple hosted activities. At this time, I'll turn it over to Mr. Ryan, our supervisor of extracurricular activities, who will talk about how we're doing that.
Hey, good evening. We are almost done. So, our cheerleading team, we've been at the same competition that Harold did, but we do in different groups. So the New Jersey Cheerleading Dance Coach Association, the competition Marlboro Cheer Team was named the Group Four State Champions in the Game Day Division. Coach, first saluting. Coach, Alyssa Purcell. Come on down. Come on down. Come on down, coach. Aviva Abrams, Louis Cornell, Lily Benzavega, Libby Pedd, Kevia, Jane Donner, Via Benzavini, Liam Agante, Alexis Presser, Marcel Patry, Melanie Hoffman, Tiffany Lavante, Vanessa Arco, Elliot Desani, Taylor Trenacosta, and Emily Walton. Congratulations, girls. Next up, the Marlboro Homedale Co-op Ice Hockey Team. They finished with a record of seventeen and nine. We were the Shore Conference Panjin Cup Champions. We were the South Sectional Co-op Champions. And they were the Shore Conference Team of the Year. Our next to follow, the Shore Conference Coach of the Year, Mr. Eric DiAbellonia. Our Assistant Coach, Eddie Burton. And now for the team. Kenny Kluger, Klugard, Josh Passo Valley, Eben Cash, Cameron Star, Justin Garishenko, Colton Kibar, Zachary Levin, Drew Lintonball, The Ducking Makers, Matt McLaughlin, Adrian Marrero, Zach Price, Kyle Rapkin, Phil Resnick, Dennis Rebzy, Sasha Sax, Tyler Scarpino, Mick Sigriachi, and T.J. West. Still want one of those ties? You need that, too. Next up will be our Boys Tennis Team. Our Boys finished with a record of sixteen and two. They were the Monmouth County Champions, and they were the Central Jersey Sectional Champions for Group Four. Our head coach, Matt Levi, and our first singles, Sharish Gandhi, are not here tonight because Sharish played in the individual state tournament, and he actually lost in a tiebreaker, twelve-ten, in the second round. But he did finish in the top eight of the state. So the rest of the team, we'll be here tonight. Evan Haber, Ariana Ball, Alexander Manchin, Michael Day, Patrick Feinsen, Josh Gayle, Dan Bruber, Tyler Luang, Leonard Resnick, Suri Raj Sani, Kanada Suzuki, Eric Silverstein, Jonathan Silverstein, Kenneth Sun, and Alan Keen. I like those ties better. Congratulations, boys. Next, I'd like to bring up the first-ever state place winner for girls wrestling at Marlboro High School, Nola Allen. This season, Nola had a record of thirty-seven and seven. She has an overall record right now of sixty-nine and twenty-six. And as I said, she's the very first Marlboro girls wrestler to be a state place winner. And in girls golf, I'd like to bring up Kashish Malik. Kashish was this year's Girls Shore Conference Golf Individual Champion. Okay, we only got about eighty more names than them. Dr. Hazel, I'd like to turn it back over to you. Congratulations, everyone. Thank you, guys.
Thank you all for your attention. Congratulations. One last round of applause for all of our recipients this evening. We're going to ask that you please exit to the door on the left-hand side. We have another group that's preparing to come in. Mr. Curry is already leading the charge, so if everybody could please proceed to their left. Have a safe evening. Really appreciate all of your patience. Sorry, we're running a few minutes behind. As you can see, we have a lot of students being recognized this evening. So three schools are going to be recognized during this session, Colts Neck Freehold Township and Manalapan High School. So, good evening, and welcome to the Board of Education Student Recognition Ceremony. I'm Dr. Hazel, the proud superintendent of the Freehold Regional High School District. I welcome all of you to this ceremony this evening. I'd like to start off by congratulating all of our award recipients for their outstanding achievements and accomplishments in academics, athletics, and extracurriculars. Each of you have worked hard to earn this recognition, and we are also proud of you. To the parents, guardians, family members, and friends who are here, thank you for being our partners and for all of your support. Without you, all of this would not be possible for our students. A special congratulations to you on your students' special achievements and recognition tonight. What I know to be true is the work that goes on in the Freehold Regional High School District and in each of our schools. Our goal is helping each student reach their full potential. Our staff and administrators know that our beginning point is to ensure that positive relationships and connections are established among our students and with the adults in the organization. Relationships for regional, that's our first. Our coaches and advisors cultivate these relationships. They do this seamlessly on a daily basis as they advise, coach, and lead our students. Your commitment to our students, community, and programs does not go unrecognized. I'm going to ask the students if they could please give a round of applause for their staff and advisors. These positive relationships and interactions pave the way for our students to engage at the highest levels in their classrooms, on the field, and in their community. These regional foundational hallmarks enable students to confidently and passionately develop themselves while in high school. The growth that our students are making academically, socially, and athletically make us proud. Tonight's program and many of the celebratory programs throughout the school year that highlight and recognize our students is a testament to the district work, to our outstanding students, and the faculty that work alongside our students. A special thank you to the Board of Education members who are seated in the front row. Their time and dedication to serve this outstanding community does not go unnoticed. We thank you, and I'd like a round of applause for all of our recipients. And congratulations to our award recipients. We are so proud of you. This program is about an hour, maybe a little bit more because there's so many of us here, which is very exciting. And we ask for everyone's full attention during the program. Really take a moment to relax, enjoy, and reflect as we share together your students' personal and team or group accomplishments this school year. I'm now going to ask Dr. Brian Donio, our principal of Colts Neck High School, to start us off. It will be followed by Freehold Township High School, ending with the post-school. And now, a very special thank you to Mr. Carl and his team for hosting tonight. Colts Neck High School, Dr. Brian Donio.
Okay, good evening, everybody. Just want to thank the Board of Education, Dr. Hazel, the entire central administration staff for holding this event. It's really a privilege to share this evening with the talented students of the Freehold Regional High School District. At this time, I'd like to invite Mr. Carl Asentola up. He's our Board of Education representative from Colts Neck to help us get out the awards. So the first award we're going to give out tonight is the Basie Award. I'd like to ask Nika Burr and William Russo to come up, and I'm going to talk a little bit about what the Basie Award is. The Basie Awards are Model Left at Broadway's Tony Awards, recognizing achievement and growth in Monmouth County's high school theater programs. Every year, the Basie's Education Department forms a committee of theater lovers, performers, and educators who then attend and score awards of fifty school productions. Nominations recognize excellence in everything from acting and directing to set and costume design, choreography, lighting, orchestra. And Colts Neck High School won for Outstanding Company in Comedy or Sweet Surrender. So, come on this way, William. Okay, our next award is the Allshore County Chorus. So I'd like to invite Sabrina Mazna and Charlie Merritt up to the podium. So the Allshore County Chorus auditions are held in November over at Wall High School. Out of the many vocalists who auditioned from the surrounding Monmouth and Ocean Counties, only a very select few were chosen, rehearsed, and performed in this group. So congratulations to Sabrina and Charlie. Okay, and we have one of our National Merit Commended Scholars here tonight, so I'd like to invite McKenzie Lyons up to the podium. McKenzie is one of our commended students, and National Merit Commended Students are recognized for their academic achievements, placing them among the top performers in the National Merit Scholarship Program. They're selected based on their PSAT scores, and McKenzie is representing our group from Colts Neck tonight, so congratulations. Okay, at this time, I'd like to invite up my supervisor of extracurricular activities, Mr. David Zuerz, to give out some of our athletic awards from Colts Neck High School.
Thank you, Dr. Donio. Thank you, Board of Ed. Thank you, Manalapan High School for hosting. I'm going to call up the Boys, if you are a member of Boys Indoor Track or Outdoor Track, please start heading to the stage. The Boys Indoor Track Team was the Central Jersey Group Three State Champions. This was their third straight indoor title. Their roster comprised of Alex Maravelas, Asher Burgess, Braden Stark, Cameron Gundy, Charlie Lakovsky, Dave Zarate, Don Marino, Ethan Taylor, Hunter Salcupa, Jay Adamala, Joe Loro, Kyle Shandall, Mason McQuig, Rowan O'Connor, Ryan Brush, and Stephen Park. Congrats to the boys. The Outdoor Track and Field Team also won the Group Three State Sectional Title. That was their seventh sectional title in program history, much comprised of the same roster, with the only differences being John Shapiro. And that's it. Individual honors that I have to mention on that roster, from Indoor, Hunter Salcupa was First Team All-State, First Team Allshore, and a Medal of Champions champion in the sixteen-hundred. Jay Adamala was fifth in the MLC in the thirty-two-hundred, Second Team All-State, First Team All-Group Three. And the Relay Team of Don Marino, Kyle Shandall, Mason McQuig, and John Shapiro were four-by-eight-hundred, sixth place at MLC. And additionally, for Outdoor, Hunter was First Team Allshore, Group Three Champion in both the eight-hundred and sixteen-hundred, and defended his Medal of Champions title outside as well in the sixteen-hundred, which is very impressive. Okay, at this time, I'd like to call up, so Boys Basketball is going to go last, we have some individual athletes I'd like to call up. Any of the girls track athletes, please head up, as well as Gavin Caulfield or Jason Bennett. Okay, so the girls track athletes who are heading up here now, first, we had four girls who were All-American. They placed fourth place in the four-by-one mile. There were Elizabeth Swarka, Emily Swarka, Juliana Siaka, and Lydia Beresnetsky. And then in Outdoor Track, staying with the girls, we had Morgan Van Meter, who was the State Sectional Champion in Discus, Julia Malbonato, who was the State Sectional Champion on both the four-by-one-hundred and four-by-four-hundred, Michaela Curry, who was the State Sectional Champion in... in the four-by-100. First Team Allshore in Track and Field was also Medal of Champion, seventh in the 400 hurdles and four-by-400, which was also an FRHSD record. Marielle Rootcroft, who was the State Sectional Champion in both relays, four-by-100, four-by-400. Avery Wallace, State Sectional Champion in the four-by-four. Natalie O'Connor, State Sectional Champion in the four-by-one and the four-by-four. And congratulations to ladies. Gavin Caulfield or Jason Bennett? Will they walk up? Okay, last but not least, can Boys Basketball please head to the stage? Okay, Boys Basketball, Head Coach Steve Janarone, who was APP, Shore Sports Insider, NJ.com, and Shore Coaches Coach of the Year. The roster was Aiden Bain, Andrew Tonkovich, Bryce Belcher. Managers, C.C. Barrero and Helsa Elshani, Dan Boncor, Dylan Younger, George Williams, Jack Freed, James Novak, Liam Calora, Lucas Sloan, who was also First Team Allshore and First Team All-Group Three, Matt Clark, Miles Schneider, Nate Sloan, Nolan Duddy, and Steven Bryce. They were the State Sectional Champions for Central Group Three, and they were also the Group Three State Champion overall, which was the first male Boys Basketball Team to win a group overall title in Freehold Regional High School District. That concludes Coltsneck Athletic Medal Winners. I'll call Dr. Donahue. At this time, I would like to invite my colleague, Dr. Celso, up to present Freehold Township.
Hello, good evening. Thank you, Dr. Donahue and his rewards. My name is Alicia Celso, the Principal of Freehold Township High School. And I extend my congratulations to all of the students being honored tonight for their exceptional accomplishments in academics, athletics, and extracurriculars. Additionally, I would like to express my gratitude for all of the parents and guardians present for their continued support. And I must also acknowledge Dr. Hazel and the Board of Education for their steadfast dedication to the students of the Freehold Regional High School District. And at this time, thank you, I invite Mrs. Elizabeth Higley, the Board of Education Representative for Freehold Township, and Mr. Chris Provo, the Supervisor of Extracurricular Activities, to join me in presenting the medals. Freehold Township High School will begin with recognizing our National Merit Scholar finalist. A National Merit Scholar finalist is a student who has been identified as a top performer in the National Merit Scholarship Program. They have demonstrated strong academic abilities through high scores on the PSAT, NMSQT, and are recognized as one of the 15,000 most promising high school seniors in the country. I am pleased to recognize Sofia Navarro Montes for her accomplishments. The Eagle Scout is the highest rank in the Scouts Boy Scouts and American Program. It's a prestigious milestone that requires years of hard work, service, and determination. To become an Eagle Scout, one must earn a total of 21 merit badges and demonstrate scout spirit, an ideal attitude based on the scout oath and law, service and leadership. An extensive service project must be completed as well. Freehold Township High School is proud to recognize Douglas Toph for earning his Eagle For his Eagle Scout project, Douglas earned Toph for the accomplishment of ten tables at Monmouth Battlefield State Park, enhancing the park's accessibility for visitors who wish to celebrate and appreciate its natural beauty. Freehold Township High School is also proud to recognize Joseph Palmyeri for earning his Eagle Scout Award. For his Eagle Scout project, Joseph focused on revitalizing the Stations of the Cross at St. Veronica's by installing lights on the exterior to assist those who wish to worship at night. Allshore Symphonic Band. To be eligible to audition for the Allshore Symphonic Band, you must be a student at an affiliated Shore Conference school. In addition, you must be sponsored by your band director. You must be a member of your school's symphonic band and remain as such throughout allshore experience. Audition requirements include scales, rudiments, all or an excerpt from NJMEA All-State Band Solo List, and sight reading. Candidates will perform wind percussion scales, snares, traps, and timpani. I am pleased to recognize the following students. Adam Zanyer. Luciana Cortino. Anna Caitlin. Sofia Briggs. Sarah Lutsky. Flashcore, number two in the shore. Alex Joseph. Principal Malik, number one in the shore. Bridget Mary Obern. Katie O'Nett, number two in the shore. Allstate Band, Principal Conroyo Clarinet, Wind Ensemble, number one in the state, CJ Mea Region Two Symphonic Band. Riley Talarico DeVoe. 2024, 2025, All Eastern Symphonic Band, Bass Clarinet. Allshore Symphonic Band, Alto Sax, number one in the shore. Riley also scored first on both the bass clarinet and soprano sax. Allstate Band, All Eastern Symphonic Band, Allshore Chorus, and CJ Mea Region Two Symphonic Allshore Jazz Ensemble. To be eligible for the Allshore Jazz Band, you must be a student at an affiliated school. In addition, you must be sponsored by your band director. You must be a member of your school's jazz band and remain as such through your allshore experience. Audition requirements include a solo and a sight reading. Congratulations to the following students. Jamila Abreu. And Nicholas Pendelow. Congratulations to the following students who received both Allshore Symphonic Band and Allshore Jazz Ensemble accolades. Davani Tanden. In the Allshore Jazz Ensemble, Davani is trumpet number two in the conference. And Al Fredericks. Allshore Symphonic Band, trombone number two in the shore. Allshore Jazz Ensemble, trombone number one in the conference. Allshore Chorus. The Allshore Chorus brings together the best of the high school choir singers from Monmouth and Ocean Counties. The organization strives to challenge our students by performing academic pieces that challenge and prepare them for singing beyond high school. Audition requirements include a quartet and solo performance. I am pleased to congratulate the following students. Trinity Campbell. Marciana Reola. Olivia Zetel. I also want to add that Olivia Zetel not only is an Allshore Chorus, but also Allstate Would the members of the Freehold Township FFA please rise and remain standing? Freehold Township High School is home to the Animal and Metabol Sciences Magnet Program. Students from throughout the district can apply and if accepted, attend FTHS to focus on various topics covering agrobiology. All students are members of our school's FFA Chapter, Future Farmers of America. This national organization is for students with diverse interests in the food, fiber, and natural resource industries encompassing science, business, and technology. In addition to production of agriculture, FFA is among the largest youth organizations in the United States. As I announce your name, kindly come forward to the stage to receive your awards. I am pleased to congratulate the following FFA members who placed either first or second at the New Jersey State FFA Convention. Ellie Drucker, first-place winner at the 2024 New Jersey State FFA Convention Science Fair. Orina Rendigo, first-place winner in the Fine Art Competition, first-place Division One winner, Conduct of Chapter Meeting. Travis DeGrigorio, first-place Division One winner, Conduct of Chapter Meeting. Peyton Story, first-place Division One winner, Conduct of Chapter Meeting. Vina Vai, first-place Division One winner, Conduct of Chapter Winner. Jonathan Icardelli, first-place Division One winner, Conduct of Chapter Meeting. Oliver Brinder, first-place Division One winner, Conduct of Chapter Meeting. Ariana Aguglia, first-place Division One winner, Conduct of Chapter Meeting. Emily Corstaro, first-place winner, Agriculture Communications. Denise Alcindor, first-place winner, Agriculture Communications, first-place winner at the 2024 New Jersey State FFA Convention for Marketing Plan. Scarlett Sanquino, first-place winner, Agriculture Communications, New Jersey FFA Member of the Month, April, first-place winner at the 2024 New Jersey State FFA Convention for Marketing Plan. And Allison Rose Merritt, first-place winner, Agriculture Communications, New Jersey FFA Member of the Month, September, 2025, 2026, New Jersey State FFA Vice President, first-place winner at the 2024 New Jersey State FFA Convention for Marketing Plan. Amelia Wiggistan. Second-place winner at the 2024 New Jersey State FFA Convention Landscape Design. Noah Jagua, second-place Division Two winner, Conduct of Chapter Meeting. Sarah Cord, second-place Division Two winner, Conduct of Chapter Meeting. Tira Palmyeri, second-place winner in the 19th Division. Second-place Division Two winner, Conduct of Chapter Meeting. Jaden Morgan, second-place Division Two winner, Conduct of Chapter Meeting. Aiden Frick, second-place Division Two winner, Conduct of a Chapter Meeting. Sarah Darianni, second-place Division Two winner, Conduct of a Chapter Meeting, and Star State Great Hands. Julina Castillo, second-place Division Two winner, Conduct of a Chapter Meeting. Katie Chan, second-place winner, Marketing Plan. Sarah Shink, second-place winner, Marketing Plan. And Mariah Engovar, second-place winner, Marketing Plan. I will now ask Mr. Provo, Supervisor of Extracurricular Activities, to take over the microphone at this time.
Good evening. The next three individuals are being recognized for individual achievements during the winter sports season. Rosabella Kearns was Shore Conference Champion and Central Region Champion at 144 pounds. Gabrielle Parker was the B-North Division Player of the Year and a Thousand Point Score. And then Sofia Tenino, who was also a First Team winner, a Thousand Point Score. Would the FTHS Count Basie Award winners please rise and remain standing? The Count Basie Center's Annual Basie Award is modeled after Broadway's Tony Awards. As Dr. Donahue explained before, this is an award given to the best high school theater programs in Monmouth County. This year, Freehold Township was lucky enough to win three different awards. The first award was Veronica Giarandola for Count Basie Award for Outstanding Lead Performance in a Comedy for Puffs. The second Count Basie that Freehold Township won was for Outstanding Course in a Musical for Legally Blonde. And I'd like all the members of our chorus to please come across the stage. Natalie Briggs. Carolyn Chan. Richard Decker. Yuki Yamandis. Moore Elsmann. Mariah Gonzalez. Coral Kelly. Madison Crayle. Sofia Pudivas. Jessica Zanitacos. Olivia Williams. Megan Zachary. Naya Corrie. Adeline Burd. Justin Jabadab. Trina Kenny. Joseph Lindoff. Jose Ben. Rocco Parisi. Jordan Patton. Carol Palmyeri. David Prado. Marciana Reola. Victoria Cesir. Katie Troyer. Abigail Velassa. Anna Valde. Sreya Venugampa. Olivia Zetel. Lee Anderson. And our third Count Basie Award was for Outstanding Stage and Techno Music for Legally Blonde. As I call your name, please come up across the stage. Ardi Smaragasi. Reese Aldridge. Nigel Biskin. Jonathan Abach. Baby Orjune. Chris Urda. Dominic Sarnik. Maya Zaputa. Sarah Darianni. Victoria Jones. Alexis Finn. Amber Lee. Samuel Rodriguez. Jenny Salzberg. Haley Servino. Giovanna Stephens. Peyton Story. Aya Trioman. Isabella Williams. Jacob Wopoff. Jacob Wolpoff. Shayna Yoninov. Isabella Perone. Amena Inkhan Benagachi. Carolina Silver. Lori Hayner. Amy Selis. Addie Barber. And Mercury Captain Zara. Congratulations to all our Count Basie winners. At this time, will everyone from the Freell Township Marching Band please stand up? This year, our band earned national recognition due to their field show this past fall. Its incorporation of music from the legendary band Metallica entered them into a contest that was judged by professionals and the winner selected by Metallica. Led by our band director, Ed Gatzick, our marching band made halftime a must-see event. I congratulate Mr. Gatzick and our band. When I call your name, please come to the stage. Jamila Abraer. Angelica Emira. Gregory Apostle. Ellie Bader. Amena Inkhan Benagachi. Amy Virgino. Amena Lyne. Sofia Briggs. Nicholas Candula. Michael Carbone. Amy Selis. Isabella Sotrola. Edgar Chavani. Austin Chen. Yanru Chen. Colette Chung. Summer Valuso. Emily Porzaro. Leah Cruz Valeriano. Francine Curry. Maya Saxuna. Taylor De La Sheer. Max Di Giovanni. Avery Distassa. Laura Exincien. Lea Exincien. Chris Van Maris. Jaden Ferriold. Alyssa Floria. Annabelle Fredericks. Samuel Fromm. Kylie Gata. Letao Gonzalez. Sofia Gonzalez. Mariah Gonzalez. Gabrielle Ruffalo. Adeline Burd. Michael Barnes. Sarah Varani. Aliana Janeyu. Victoria Jones. Ash Joseph. President Kanaya. Peyton Kanaya. Anna Kayton. Alexis Finn. Katrina Kenny. Jack Honard. Alyssa Lane. Amber Lee. Aiden Linder. Andrew Luke. Sarah Luski. Joshua Luxenberg. Isabella Dariad Murglia. Deepalishun. Ruth Dresch. Kibatsam. Nada Kumul. Bridget Marie Ober. Jameson Lane. Daniel Olsen. Lila Palmary. Aline Patel. Jordan Patton. Leslie Hayner. Tari Perez. Sofia Perez. Enya Hunter. Mariana Letino. Valerie Reyes. Brandon Rice. Mark Rice. Ellie Robertson Quo. Ryan Rodriguez Velacuca. Oliver Drop. Alina Rudenko. Ella Salinardo. Lucas Sazman. Georgia Sanchez Marquez. Angel Schmitt. Yorani Serra Ronin. Isabella Saravelino. Carolina Silver. Emily Stewart. Amy Sylvester. Riley Talarico de Ball. Devani Daniel. Adam Tom. Douglas Tom. Lea Trillman. Albert Chompas. Sean Van Gerder. Maya Warren. Isabella Williams. Linder Williams. Jacob Wolpoff. Tyler Young. Isabella Zabara. Caroline Zanyer. Congratulations to tonight's winners from Freell Township High School. And now welcome to Menalopen High School, Mr. Sean Curry.
Thank you, Mr. Provo. Good evening, welcome to Menalopen High School. My name is Mr. Sean Curry, and the very proud prince of Menalopen High School. First, I would like to thank our Board of Education, our Superintendent, Dr. Hazel, as well as the entire Central Office Administration for providing our students with endless opportunities to pursue their passions and help nurture our students in all that they desire at the Freell Regional High School District Hall. I would also like to congratulate all of our medal recipients tonight and thank you for how you represent our district on a daily basis. At this time, I would like to ask the Menalopen and English Town Board of Education Representatives, Ms. Jamie Bruno and Ms. Diana Caffiella to join me in presenting the district medals to our Menalopen High School students. Our first two medal recipients are being recognized as National Merit Scholar finalists. Dr. Donahue and Dr. Selzo previously provided the description of what constitutes a National Merit Scholar finalist. At this time, I'd like to turn it over to Menalopen High School's Sika, Ms. English, who will recognize our athletic and extracurricular accomplishments.
Give it the best for last. Much like you heard from Freell Township, our band earned national recognition due to their field show this past fall with its incorporation of music from the legendary band Metallica. Led by our band director, Mr. Jose Moniz, these young ladies and young men made 15 minutes of halftime a true full rock show. Congratulations to Mr. Moniz and our band. If you can come up to the stage to receive your medal. Gabrielle Emrosio. Abe Itardi. Nathaniel Askey. Isla Baumann. Sophia Berchak. Caleb Casanova. Sophia Katania. Diamond Case. Aaron Raporsky. Stella Carter. Rohan Del Rosa. Thomas Deanen. Sean Hendrick. Lucas Hendrick. Ashton Forte. Joseph Fosello. Ethan Booth. Teddy Gatter. Kristen Gibbons. Christina Urlo. Andrea Pereira. Gillian Cover. Christopher Bullock. Debbie Cow. Julia Conings. Kyle Copin. Ardar Shumar. Ryan Young. Ricky McCallum. Genesis Maladama. Christopher Motrin. Connor Pasquale. Rosa Pranito. Gianna Faladog. Anthony Biggar. Ryan Silverberg. Cedric Smith. Leah Sosa. Emma Sosa. Kira Solomon. Henry Vergia Senor. Kristen Wright. And Mary Diana Smith. In addition, three of our band members have further distinguished themselves by earning Allshore Symphony Band honors. Jason Katz. Tina. Natalie Rush. Trombone. At Menalopen High School, we are proud to house the unique Bravecast organization. This growing group of students works as an in-house television production crew with weekly broadcasts of announcements aired during Block One on Fridays under the direction of Advisor Joe Girardi. These broadcasts incorporate both line and tape segments. The hard work and innovation of this group earned them a national award through Mascot Media in 2024 and 25 Broadcast Awards for the Event of the Year and Play of the Year. This event was broadcast coverage of the annual FRHSD Spooktacular Window Painting Contest anchored by Jenny Patterson. And the Play of the Year was brought by Bravecast, produced varsity football coverage against St. John Andy High School, commented by sports journalist Evan Zaretsky. At this time, I would like to bring up all the students from Bravecast responsible for these segments. Alex Daniel Bird. India Brad. Emily Cook. Aiden Owen. Marco Dyak Musino. Kalen Donovan. Uchihana Badrosa. Aiden Fight. Samuel Gankin. Evan Goldberg. Daniel Goldberg. Ajol Samuel Lorenz. Jamie Conings. Jordan Ivory. Jason Katz. Michael Hurst. Robert Moore. Jenny Patterson. Racy Petter. Joel Sidera. Arwin Riedera. Mark Riedera. Stephen Russo. Brendan Springer. Shai Shalman. Kira Sullivan. Jayden Arda. Patrick Miller. Athletically, Menalopen is celebrating a number of individual and team accomplishments. We had a following of individual earns various accolades for the achievements during the 2024-25 Winter and Spring Season. I'd first like to bring up Sophie Bamm. Sophie is a four-year wrestler on our highly successful girls wrestling team and is also Menalopen High School Student Ambassador for the Shore Conference. In one of his decorated careers, Sophie has been recognized tonight for being the Shore Conference Champion in her weight class during this past season. Thank you, Sophie, and best wishes. Arguably, our most successful program this year has been our track and field program. This past spring, two of our distance runners won gold in different races. I would like to invite Ryan Goldberg to come up. Ryan Goldberg was the Central Jersey Group Four State Sectional Champion in the 800 Meter. Next is Clay Stevens. Not only did he play the sectional title in the 1600 meter run, but he was also the overall Group Four Champion in the same race. Congratulations to both our contestants for their accomplishments. But it is our ladies track and field team that truly ran away with the accolades this year, both literally and figuratively. This group of girls won the Group Four State Championship as a team during the winter season. First, I'd like to call up Jessica Abbott. Natalie Buthard. Natalie Bouchard. Gabby Daly. Sehi Honig. Chela Mandrick. Julie Cosent. And Olivia Shlomkin. All of these ladies were the Group Four State Champions. In addition to winning Group Four State Champs in the winter, the following athletes also achieved individual success. Jessica Abbott was a Group Four State Champion in the Distance Medley Relay, fifth in the nation, Distance Runner of the Year, Spring Track, Central Jersey Group Four State Sectional Championship in the 800 Meter, 1600 Meter, 3200 Meter, and the 4x8 Relay, and was a Group Four Champion in the 1600 Meter and the Distance Medley Relay. Natalie Bouchard, in Winter Track, was a Group Four State Champion and a Distance Medley Relay, also fifth in the nation. During her spring career, she was Central Jersey Group Four State Sectional Champion in the 4x800 Relay and Group Four State Relays Champion in the Distance Medley Relay. Senior Sehi Honig, during Winter Track, was the Shore Conference Champion in the 3200 Meter, Group Four State Champion in the Distance Medley Relay, fifth in the nation. And in the spring, she was Central Jersey Group Four State Sectional Champion in the 4x8 Medley Relay and Group Four State Champion in the 3200 Meter Distance Medley Relay. Olivia Shlomkin, during the winter, was the Group Four State Champion in the Distance Medley Relay, fifth in the nation, and during the spring was the Central Jersey Group Four State Sectional Champion in the 4x8 Relay and Group Four State Champion in the Distance Medley Relay. Congratulations to all of our athletes and all of our students for making Menalopen the best place ever. And I will turn it over to our principal, Sean Curry.
Thank you, Ms. English. That concludes our medal ceremony this evening. At this time, I would like to once again congratulate all our medal recipients tonight. Wish all of our students all the best on your final exams and an outstanding finish and graduation to our senior students. Thank you. One last thing, as we leave here, we're going to take a quick intermission, and then when we come back, it may convene for our Board of Education meeting, our Menalopen's own, Samuel Gankin, will be giving a speech as the student representative of the Executive Superintendent's Cabinet member. So if you'd like to stick around and see Sam Gankin, who was a part of LFD and Bravecast, you can do so as well. Thank you.
Okay, hello. That was the question. All right. We're not in there yet. It's okay. And it was amazing. It was beautiful. It was wonderful.
It was a lot of fun.
Oh my God. Yeah, it was amazing. Great. Okay. We're going to go right back to... We're going to get done with that. We'll go back to...
So, good evening. A much smaller party here. We have two special recognition programs, whole houses for both. But across our schools, you know, there's a mix of senior proms, senior activities, finishing up all of our coursework, final examinations. We can start for students on Wednesday, June 16th through Tuesday, June 24th, with graduation on Wednesday, June 25th. It's a very special school year. Also a very busy time for our administrators and our staff. We are also, as we close out the school year, we're also really planning and ramping up for next school year. So many of our leadership retreats and our professional development planning will go on from the month of July. But I really want to recognize the 2024-25 Executive Student Cabinet. We work with a fantastic group of students across our high schools, and I'd like to recognize each of you. Colts Neck, Kate Diktor. Rainbow, Elena Case. Freehold County Bill, Scarlett Sempina. Allen High School, he is playing this evening in Barnacle, so it could be here, Nicholas Satorah. Barbara High School, and I'm skipping Menalpin for a reason. We have Antonio Lombardo. John Gankin. Our last, each of our Executive Student Cabinet members presented at our Board of Education meetings. They did an outstanding job. Many of them thematic-based, really spoke about their experiences during the Freehold Regional High School district, through their four years of high school. This evening, Sam Gankin of Menalpin High School is going to finish us off. They still have more work to do between now and the end of the school year. They will be orientating the new Executive Student Cabinet for the 25-26 school year. I know they are working on a video that we will be sharing with our staff and many of our community staff that are coming on board in the school district. So still some more work ahead, but we are coming into the final hours. And on behalf of, you know, Dr. Howell, myself, the Board of Education, your principals, we thank you for your service to the school district. I think one thing that I always echoed with you, when you were a representative of the Superintendent's Cabinet, you were truly representing not just your personal viewpoints, your experience in the Freehold Regional High School district, but all the students at your school. And all of you kind of embody the leadership and the qualities that make us so proud here in our district. So thank you for your service. I know you are all off to great places and will stay in touch with us after graduation. But I am going to invite Sam Gankin to the podium to present himself.
Good evening, everyone. As the school year comes to a close, I want to take a moment not to just reflect, but to say thank you on behalf of the students across the entire Freehold Regional High School district. This district is more than just buildings and bell schedules. It's a community built on the belief that every student deserves to be seen, heard, and supported. Whether you walk in the halls of Freehold Borough, Freehold Township, Colts Neck, Menalpin, Barrow, or Howell, that feeling, the sense that you matter, is something that you can't miss. That's because FRHSD isn't just built on academic excellence, it's built on people. The teachers who stay after class to make sure that everyone's okay, the staff who greet us every day with a smile, the administrators who lead with integrity, every part of the district, every person in it helps shape our character. And at the center of it all is respect. But not just the kind that shows up on posters. I'm talking about the respect that turns into action. The kind that builds school culture, drives student leadership, and reminds us that we're all part of something bigger than ourselves. I've seen it in my own school, Menalpin, and I've seen it echoed in every meeting with students across the district. That's shared experience, that's shared pride. It's what makes FRHSD so special. Being a part of the Executive Student Cabinet deepened that connection with more for me. The Executive Student Cabinet gave me the opportunity to represent Menalpin with great pride, build friendships that I'm excited to continue for hopefully the rest of my life, and be a part of a team that was given the opportunity to shape a better future for the students that come after us. These are the experiences that made my high school experience incredible and helped me understand the meaning behind making an impact. It doesn't take being a member to make an impact, though. All of us here can make our own impact. So on behalf of everyone in the Executive Student Cabinet, thank you for your time, the support, and the belief in who we are and who we're becoming. Here's to carrying this way forward into every classroom, every conversation, every next step. Thank you so much.
Do you have any problems? Don't go over.
No.
Friday, tomorrow.
All right, good day. Have a good time and thank you for your services here.
Well, I was like, oh, today I think.
When you talk about the...
Twelve years of... And it's a great word, a great word. But we thank all of you, all of you women embody the qualities of a leader, but also you lead with, you know, care and compassion to your schools and your fellow classmates. And we are so extremely proud of how you represented this district this school year and for the great things that you're going to do, you know, in the future. You always represent this district and the Freehold Regional High School district in your school will always be your home. So we congratulate and thank all of you.
Mr. Skinner, any changes to the board agenda?
Yes, Mr. President. In addition to the items that have been noted on the agenda for the weekend tonight, the board also discussed the exception number three, student discipline report, student attendance issues. Number seven, the board discussed tax levy incentive program for 2026 school year budget. The board discussed matter agency reference number 177-625. And in number eight, the board discussed superintendent's evaluation.
Thank you. Do I have a motion to approve seat one through seat six?
Motion, second.
Any discussion, board? Am I hearing a discussion, vote call?
Ms. Hestol?
Yes.
Ms. Bruno?
Yes.
Ms. Scabbiello?
Yes.
Ms. Bushard, Marcus?
Yes.
Ms. Siggin?
Yes.
Ms. Slavin?
Yes.
Ms. McColl?
Yes.
Ms. Messinger?
Yes.
Ms. Brum?
Yes.
Thank you.
Push is passed.
Can I have a motion to approve day six public hearing?
Motion, second.
Any discussion, board? Am I hearing a discussion, vote call?
Ms. Hestol?
Yes.
Ms. Bruno?
Yes.
Ms. Scabbiello?
Yes.
Ms. Bushard, Marcus?
Yes.
Ms. Siggin?
Yes.
Ms. Slavin?
Yes.
Ms. McColl?
Yes.
Ms. Messinger?
Yes.
Ms. Brum?
Yes.
Thank you.
Just a reminder, all the communications are filed at the Board Secretary's office. We don't cut any board reports tonight, but we do have one person who would like to speak. Sarah Rundet. Sarah?
Hi. Hi.
Representing our Teachers Association? I'm representing the Teachers Association, sorry, just coming in.
Oh, yeah, I am.
Okay.
Yeah, just here to say hello to you.
Thank you.
Good evening, everybody. On behalf of Joe Sanamecita, our Negotiations Chair, the FREA Executive Committee, and our entire Negotiations Team, I want to thank Dr. Hazel and the Freehold Regional High School Board of Education, everybody who served, for their sincere engagement throughout our recent negotiations. It's critical to the success of our communities that the individuals who educate our students feel professionally valued. The collective bargaining agreement that is on the agenda tonight is the product of many long days, long days, of conversations where both parties share a commitment to the success of our district. I'm proud to lead the educational professionals of FREA and Freehold to be part of the Freehold Regional. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you for standing up to the projects.
You're welcome.
Ms. Bruno, just, I'm doing changes on the agenda.
Do you want to make some changes, Mr. President? Do you want to make changes? Okay.
So in the back, we have two sheets. Approval of reservations, approval of appointments, approval of substitutes, former instruction personnel, and approval of appointments for coaches, substitutes, former instructors, quality personnel. And then finally, approval of lunch duty properties, which is eight to five. So two attachments in the back.
Is that all? You good? Okay. Do this much, but we're going to take, try and take the last few items. Personnel negotiations, H1 through H19. If any board members have discussion, if any board members have discussion on those items, you can take that during the discussion. H1 through H19, we're going to do I1 through J2, which is program operations, building, transportation, our physical plan. And K1 through L2, educational program administration. So, I need a motion?
Second.
Second was? So just so it's clear, this is H1 through L2. All, all motions.
Any discussion, board? Any discussion? Not seeing any discussion, vote call?
Ms. Hestol?
Yes.
Ms. Bruno?
Yes, except for H19.
H13.
And for H19.
Okay, Ms. Bruno? Okay, Ms. Bruno. Ms. Scabbiello?
Yes, I'll do everything except H19, which I have stayed. And the only reason I have stayed is because I have a class, that's not for any other reason.
Thank you. Ms. Bushard, Marcus?
Yes.
Ms. Taylor?
Yes, except I have stayed on H6 and 15, remarks to Sarah Provo, and for H19 again because I'm...
Thank you. Ms. Slavin?
Yes.
Ms. McColl?
Yes, except I have stayed on H19 due to a problem.
Thank you. Ms. Messinger?
Yes.
Ms. Bruno?
Yes.
Thank you.
All motions passed.
Does any board member have any old business to discuss? So, um...
Wait, wait. I just wanted, I don't know if this is going to do, but I just wanted to congratulate that I saw that Jen Swett and Ms. Gergis both got the doctorates.
Congratulations to the next, the next one. New business?
I just want to congratulate all of the award winners for tonight, for athletics, for sports. Does that make sense? Academic sense, sports. And all the hard work that you put in. It's great to be able to recognize you all.
I just want to hold, I wanted to thank Freehold Borough for the invitation to the Medsi breakfast programs for their awards, along with some other board members and administration, it was very nice to see them. Then women, all wins some scholarship money as they move forward in their careers.
And what a great relationship they have with the Center State.
Yeah, it's still so good.
The hospital, the staff at the hospital are amazing. You know, because they give to our program. And because the food there is just, the food there.
Oh, I should, I should actually acknowledge the students that cooked in the culinary program. The cooked food was delicious and something. They also eat their accolades.
Yes.
And it wasn't like this.
Dr. Hazel went for double on the section. Yeah, it was really good, so I'll vouch, yeah.
Okay, any...
We do, we have some new business. I'd really like to thank Menalpin High School this evening for hosting student awards. It's always a lot to get the building kind of ramped up and ready and a different setup. So I want to thank Matt Verdoni, the buildings and grounds crew, and Mrs. Belly here at Menalpin High School for setting everything up for us and always having this building sparkling and clean for us. So hopefully, Mr. Curry can kind of cast that along. I did see Mrs. Belly kind of bouncing around, working really hard tonight. We also have four new positions, four new members joining the Freehold Regional Supervisory and Administrative Team. And I would like to personally introduce these members to our Board of Education members and greater community. As you all know, Major Pinsack is retiring from Colts Neck High School. So we have Commander Charles, please stand. Andrew Fishman will be joining the Freehold Regional High School District on September 1st. He's our new Senior Naval Science Instructor and will be leading the Colts Neck Navy Junior ROTC Program. We thank you for your service to this nation, a lot going on as you join our team. Commander Eaton brings decades of experience in the US Navy and assignments that took him to Europe and Africa as a military, as well as recent experience as an executive officer of the Navy ROTC and Assistant Professor of Naval Science with both Rutgers and Princeton Universities. So tremendous amount of experience in the classroom and working with students as well. As all of you know, our board members know, Colts Neck High School Junior ROTC Program was named the most outstanding unit in the nation in 2019 and again in 2023. So we look forward to all of your experience and expertise that Commander Eaton will bring to our exemplary program at Colts Neck High School. So welcome. We're excited to have you on our team. Ms. Stephanie Hallahan, please stand. Current Chief of the Freehold High School. Will be taking on the role of Academic Supervisor of Mathematics and Science. Ms. Hallahan will finish out the current school year in her present position. She's been helping out in many capacities of the school. But will assume her new role in August when the leadership team and the supervisory team comes together to get started for the opening of schools. I know her journey started out in 2008. You were a geometry and algebra one teacher with a Freehold Adult School that closed in 2010. Ms. Hallahan then spent several years working as a math teacher, then as a vice principal in the Cedarville School District. Took a little break from education to raise her family. And in 2016, came and rejoined the Freehold Regional High School District. So we are excited to have you joining Freehold High School as a assigned supervisor, but also joining the greater supervisory team at the Freehold Regional High School District. So we wish you the best. Another supervisor appointment, Mr. Christopher Johnson, please stand. He's a teacher of biology and special education at Howell High School since 2020. And you'll be stepping into the role of Academic Supervisor of Special Education at Howell High School, starting July 1st. Our special education supervisors are 12-month employees, so you're going to go right from one, stepping right into the other. And I know you've already started some work already. You've been very active in the school community as a coach and a co-adviser, served on multiple committees in the school and the district level, including curriculum development, serving on the skip team, middle states, and also on the planning team for the Compass Strategy Plan. A dedicated educator, a graduate of our district's aspiring administrators academy under Dr. Sharp's leadership. And you foster a supportive and inclusive environment for all of our students to be able to learn and grow. And I know that's going to carry over into your position as special education supervisor, working closely with Dr. Howell and all the other special education... other special education supervisors across the district for the great work, instructionally, socially, for all of our students in the program. So, we welcome you to your new position and wish you all best. I see Ms. English is here and presented to the student athletes at Menalpin High School. Ms. English has really just been, you know, really staple here at Menalpin High School, has worked so hard to serve all of the students, both athletically and also academically here at Menalpin High School, overcoming issues as you move on. But as you move on, brings forth, here in our district where seems to be a friend in college, so I introduce Mr. Vincent Esposito. He joined the Freehold Regional High School District effective July 1 as the supervisor of extracurricular activities at Freehold High School. Mr. Esposito comes with a wealth of experience in education and athletics. He left the world of professional baseball, not with the Yankees, not with the Mets, not with the Phillies, but with the Toronto Blue Jays. He has set his sights on starting, set his sights on starting his career in 2007 as a special education teacher and baseball coach, a sport that I love very much. His coaching career ranged from working as an assistant baseball coach at St. James' High School in Metuchen, King University, Middlesex County College, to head varsity baseball coach where he taught at Colonia High School in Woodbridge, New Jersey. In 2017, Mr. Esposito moved into the field of supervision of school leadership, serving first as the vice principal supervisor of athletics and activities in Henry Hudson Regional, and most recently as assistant principal with the Middletown Township Public School District. Coming with a wealth of experience and expertise in administration, in athletics, in working and supporting students academically and athletically, we welcome you to our team. We are super excited for the value that you are going to bring to our entire secret team and administrative team here at Freehold Regional High School District. So, welcome aboard.
Congratulations to the new retirees, and we know where you are, so we can find you up there. All of the coaches here, when we see her at the games with her sports performance, she's dressed up, she has her face makeup on, she's got Menalpin here, and I was a secret many years, wouldn't you get dressed up like that?
Energy and excitement, yeah.
And you don't have to look that difficult, right? They look good in the suit, come here.
Who is that?
And to everybody else in the surprise room, we'd like to... Any other new business?
I'd like to make a motion to approve A6.
Uh-oh. All on favor?
All right. We are adjourned.